Okay, I'm going to call the order of the Board of Education Committee of the Whole Meeting on January 27th, 7:00 PM at Humboldt Middle School. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Boogin?
Here.
Here.
Ms. Hamlin?
Here.
Ms. Hamlin?
Here.
Ms. Paulson?
Here.
Mr. Farrell, you want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is applied by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own.
Can I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules in adjourned to a workshop setting?
Still moved.
By Mrs. Crabtree.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hamlin, Mrs. Hutchinson.
Ms. Areson?
Yes.
Ms. Hamlin?
Yes.
Ms. Boogin?
Yes.
Ms. Erickson?
Yes.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, this is a different kind of board meeting than our community has likely witnessed in the past. Five times a year, we conduct a Committee of the Whole Meeting that allows the district administration to present on topics that are central to the instructional programs and overall operation of the school district. This is one of those meetings. So our agenda and format is different than the last several meetings. Importantly tonight, we have adjusted to Tier One mitigations with the opportunity for some members of the public to attend in person. Public comment is typically at the end of our Committee of the Whole meetings, but we've made the decision to move it to the front of the meeting to not require people wishing to provide in-person public comments to wade through the whole meeting. The focus of tonight's meeting will be on two items. First, we're going to hear an update on our return to in-person learning. We are excited and thankful that every one of our District 200 schools is open and complying with the mitigation strategies established for a safe learning environment for students, teachers, and staff. Next, as we do every January's Committee of the Whole, we hear an update of our five-year financial forecast. This is a critical step in the budgeting process and long-term financial stewardship of the school district. Next, we'll go to public comment. Due to the ongoing pandemic and DuPage County's recent move back to Tier One mitigations, which limit the number of individuals that is spaced at 25, we continue to temporarily amend our public comment procedures for this meeting to allow comments to be made in person or emailed to the board and acknowledged in our meeting. In accordance with Board Policy 2.230, members of the public wishing to offer public comment in person will have the opportunity to do so. With only 10 members, we have less than 10 will be allowed in the meeting room at a given time due to the number of board members and staff members also in the room. The public comment signup sheet was available until 7:00 PM while only, let's see, the board meeting is available for viewing via live stream on the district's YouTube channel. We do have one person signed up for public comment, so as with all comments, please be aware that it's the board's regular practice to not directly discuss, ask questions, or take actions on public comment until the time has been taken to gather adequate information. The board is here to listen. Lack of action or a direct response following public comments does not imply any lack of interest in what is being shared. Per Board policy, we've allocated 30 minutes for public comments, and comments on any one subject will be limited to 20 minutes. To preserve confidentiality, the board and its president request that items relating to either personnel or students be provided to the board privately or in writing for consideration in a future closed session if necessary. The board must protect the civility and decorum of the meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board, our district leadership team, and the democratic process in your public comment. Please include your name, whether you're resident of the district. Mrs. Crabtree will time the comments and raise her hand when three minutes is up, at which time we ask you to wrap up your comments. Please be factual and courteous and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. As I mentioned, we have one person who signed up for public comment, Erin Young.
Thank you. Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. My name is Erin Young, and I am a resident of Wheaton. I really do want to express my appreciation for the time and effort you've put into listening to our community. It's a lot of time, so I really, really appreciate that. Like I said, my name is Erin Young. I'm in a unique position this school year. I'm teaching in-person kindergarten at Emerson Elementary School. I taught third grade in the Virtual Academy for six weeks after a teacher resigned. I have an eighth grader at Franklin Middle School, learning in the hybrid model, and I have a sixth grader who attends St. Mike's. He's five days a week in person, and he has been since the beginning of the year. Tonight, I want to give you another perspective to noodle on. We know the research about the negative social-emotional aspects of the current hybrid option, but I would also like you to consider the engagement issue. One of our goals as educators is to foster a love of learning, a lifelong love of learning. Now, there have been positive outcomes from online remote that I wouldn't trade. I've seen my eighth grader become more independent and conscientious and a little more organized, but are we helping to create lifelong learners with our current model? Our district teachers are working hard, and virtual and hybrid teachers might even be working harder than ever before. Teaching from a computer in your house or empty classroom is just as hard as learning from a computer in your room, and I want to tell you why. Engagement. Engagement means to occupy a person's intentions or efforts. Now, you might be thinking that most of the students learning in hybrid at home are doing fine. They're turning in assignments, they're passing tests, they may even participate every now and then, but compliance is different than engagement. Remember the goal of being a lifelong learner? Remember our district goal of getting kids college and career-ready? Ellen Oliver Keen is a guru for engagement, and she says that engagement is one of the most crucial learning tools we can help our children develop. Research shows we remember and reapply more effectively when we are engaged, and this is true for everyone. Engagement, the act of helping students become engaged, is a challenge for teachers when we have students in our classroom, a captive audience. How much harder is it when they are in their pajamas at home? When we have kids face-to-face in our own classrooms, observing them, knowing about them as people and not just about learning, and not just knowing them as learners, but stepping in to ask questions, providing feedback immediately on assignments, listening in on debates or discussions, and looking these kids in the eyes to gauge understanding, we are able to better do our job, and we're able to be even more exceptional at what we do. I'll wrap up with just saying that I'm a realist, and I know that a lot of what people are asking you for, you can't do right now. I know what our world is in right now, and what I would love it if you could do is take the time to revisit our mission statement that emphasizes college and career readiness, and think about the best way to achieve this in a pandemic. Maybe we could look at high school and middle school differently, take away the asynchronous day and get the kids in face-to-face on an A/B schedule. Kindergarten through fifth is doing great without lunch. Maybe we could think of taking lunch away, making the most face-to-face time. Really, how can we get the most bang for our buck in getting kids in face-to-face? Because we know research shows engagement, getting them engaged in learning is what is best for them, and the best way to do that is when they're in our classrooms. And there's a lot more learning to be done this year, and I know it can't be easy, but I know we can compromise and work together, and I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Community members not attending this meeting in person and who wanted to provide comments to the Board of Education had the opportunity to send an email to us between the posting of this agenda on Friday and 5:00 today. All board members receive and read these emails. To be acknowledged, emails are to clearly indicate in the subject line that the email was intended for acknowledgement at the January 27th Board of Education meeting. These emails will be acknowledged but not read, and then documented in the Board Communication log. We did receive two emails during this timeframe, both around reopening plans. One was from Heather Beck, and the other one was from Brooke Weston. So those will be logged. With that, that closes the public comment portion of the meeting. Next, we'll turn to our two agenda items. First ones are on instruction and our return to in-person learning update. Dr. Schuler and team.
Perfect, thanks. All right, so we have two topics on the Committee of the Whole Agenda tonight, and I want to, as I think Mr. Paulson already did at the front of the meeting, set a little bit of context, both for discussion tonight and what to expect at the end of February at our next Committee of the Whole meeting. So typically, the Committee of the Whole Agenda and focus has been on kind of study topics that are in front of the district. We are going to spend some time tonight giving you an update on progress in our return to learn plans. I think as we move through the school year, the focus continues to be on how do we move forward in the most productive way to continue to open up opportunities for students in the learning past that we have. We have some exciting updates tonight in terms of what we're seeing with some of our extracurricular athletic programs that we're going to be able to update, as well as some of our continued focus and opportunity on how we expand in-person opportunities for students. And again, you'll see it at the front end of this presentation tonight. Our effort has been, continues to be, to create those opportunities within the learning options that we've identified to expand those face-to-face opportunities, and we're going to continue to do that consistent with mitigation. So we're going to go through that tonight. As we look forward to February, though, topic that has been front and center on the minds of board members of our administrative leadership teams, teachers, administrators throughout the district, really is the topic of what are we doing to mitigate perhaps some of the opportunities that have been lost by students this year, and so we're going to spend quite a bit of time at your February Committee of the Whole with a deeper dive into that topic. So I want to make sure that the board knows and understands and is validated that we will be doing a deeper dive into that, along with an update on our equity plan at that February Committee of the Whole. So two pretty deep teaching and learning topics that we'll deal with in that month. But for tonight, here's where we're going to focus our time and energy tonight at both the elementary, middle, and high school level. We want to give the board an update in terms of where we stand, specifically the efforts underway to continue to look at opportunities for our students. So what you're going to see tonight are some areas that we're addressing and timelines associated with how we're addressing those areas. As I mentioned, you're going to hear an update on athletic extracurricular activities, and again, even from the point that this presentation and update was built, there was an update today from IHSA outlining some very specific seasons for the balance of the year, and so we're going to go through that. Dr. Kyle, at the end of the high school update and the athletic extracurricular update, is going to give you an update on some of the work that's being done currently to focus on our class of 2021, and some of their end-of-the-year opportunities that we very much want to make sure that we provide. We'll give you a quick update on surveillance and vaccine, and then kind of end our time tonight, talking a little bit about advocacy and where we stand in terms of continuing the conversation, both county and broader state level, around some of the guidance that we want to continue to work with. So again, stated upfront, I'm going to say it again, it is, always has been our goal to safely return to our in-person options. A lot of the time this evening is going to focus on that. We ended our last conversation by highlighting, as we looked forward, some of the things that we anticipated continuing to adjust as we move through this year, and one of the things that we'll focus heavily on tonight is this transition from first to second trimester. And while that might not seem like a super pivotal point in terms of adjusting our plans, it is. So if you remember back to the beginning of the year, our elementary families, we asked to commit to a learning model by trimester. So they made a choice for the first trimester. At the end of that first trimester, we had an opportunity for families to adjust their choice between the remote or the in-person option. We will again have an opportunity for families to adjust their choice as we look at the third trimester, and so you'll hear tonight, especially as Dr. Salagi forecasts, some of the elementary discussion, some focus around that transition point for families, because again, that is kind of the point where we're going to do that. At our middle and high school, we asked families to commit for a semester. So they made the commitment for first semester. We recently, a few weeks back, that opportunity was re-upped for families to commit to second semester, and so as we had a lot of conversation around what are we seeing right now through the end of this week in terms of in-person numbers and attendance, some of that will change as we move into second semester. And Monday, beginning of second semester, it kind of opens up a new pivotal window in terms of us looking at some of our opportunities. And again, then the pieces that follow vaccines, some of the changes in guidance, we'll hit on a few of those things, but a lot of tonight is really going to hinge on kind of where we're at with the start of second semester. Nothing new on here. You know our current learning models, early childhood up through middle and high school, so no change, but we're just recapping it in the presentation where we currently stand at each of those levels. And so I'm going to turn it over first to Dr. Salagi to talk to you a little bit about elementary.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education and community. Just want to offer a brief update on elementary, and then also some of the things that we'll be looking ahead to in the future. First, at elementary, I want to just mention that we're continuing to offer a sustainable in-person learning experience, five days a week for elementary students in person. That learning model's been since the start of the school year. As a reminder, we started September 1st and have continued to offer that consistent opportunity, five days a week, for our students. As a recap of what that day is, students are attending from 9:00 to 1:00, and they're really getting all of their core academics during that time. So that 9:00 to 1:00 time is really uninterrupted with the exception of a mask break and possibly a specialist popping in. It's really all about their core academics and instructional minutes. The students do not have lunch or recess during their day, and the students do not have in-person PE, which traditionally was offered daily for 20 minutes, and they do not have in-person art or music that was offered once a week. They get those specials asynchronously. Another piece, when we talk about the model being sustainable, throughout the different fluctuations within the year, community transmission, all the different pieces, that cohorted model was one thing that we've pointed to that we believe has been a success in allowing us to continue that consistency. We do have currently 4,061 in-person students, so about 77% of our elementary students that are enrolled in the district, and this also includes Jefferson as well, are choosing in person, and then we have 23% of our students that are opting for the Virtual Academy. Again, just worth noting, our Virtual Academy is completely, really set up as a separate school. So our teachers that are teaching in-person in their schools are only focused on the in-person students that are with them, and vice versa, our students that are teaching in the Virtual Academy, they are strictly with their students. While we're continuing to offer what we believe a really, really good learning experience for our students that are choosing in person, we're still always asking, okay, what's next? What can we do better? One of the conversations that we've started with our principals, jointly members of our senior leadership team with our principals, is really how can we focus on our students that are disconnected, specifically students that may not be engaging or intending as much in the Virtual Academy, and we're asking that of our homeschool principals, because we know the fact exists that our students from our Virtual Academy will be coming back to us, and we hope that they'll come back to us, you know, have that opportunity, you know, if not this year, at the start of next year, and we really know that for some of our students, they, if they're not attending in the Virtual Academy, and they haven't been in our building for almost now 11 months, we need to start that outreach, and we have started that work, but really thinking strategically, not only about what the summer type of programming can look like for them, but what can we do now? So our principals are actively engaged in that. They've been meeting with their teams and developing some action plans. Mrs. Murphy and Mrs. Moran partnered together too, to help create lists of kids that weren't showing engagement, so we're actively engaged in that and thinking ahead about our students, because certainly our students in the Virtual Academy belong to a homeschool as well, and we don't want to lose sight of that, and our principals and teachers certainly have not. Dr. Schuler also mentioned at the onset, we're actually starting to prepare for a third trimester transition. So the start of third trimester is mid-March. I believe it's March 15th, and if you remember back to mid-October, we offered an opportunity, and we'll do the same thing again, for any of our students that, or families that are currently enrolled in the Virtual Academy, they'll have the opportunity to transition into in-person learning if they'd like, and I'll outline the process, just like we did last time, at our February board meeting, at our next meeting, and vice versa. Any student that's in in-person will have that opportunity to transition back to the Virtual Academy. I also think it's worth noting that we're continuing, it is our hope, to get back to that full traditional school day, and when I say that, the full day, the things that are left out of the day right now in person are lunch, recess, PE, and then art and music, which is once a week. We're evaluating that transition. Obviously, the conditions around that will be a part of that process, but certainly, our minds are always thinking about what's next, how can we get to that point? If that transition were to occur, certainly while I'm this next, in a couple of weeks at the next board meeting, we want to make it clear for any of our families that could be transitioning through a trimester, that we're evaluating that process and that that potential transition to expanding the day could happen during third trimester. So certainly, we are, feel that we're providing a really good, solid learning experience for elementary students, and it's consistent, five days a week, but we always want to get better and continue to offer the full school experience when conditions allow us to. I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Murphy.
Good evening. Here I'll be presenting some items that are on the docket for our middle school hybrid plan. We are continuing to look at ways to strengthen and iterate in our hybrid model. And so first and foremost, just as Dr. Salagi just spoke to you about that registration process and families switching their request for either Virtual Academy or in-person hybrid, we are actually going through the process right now of making those schedule changes at the middle school level, and so that will be completed by this Friday. So on Monday, all of our students that have requested a new model will be starting. And so you'll see the number of students that are going to be enrolled in our Virtual Academy. That is 20% of our population at the middle school level, and 80% of our students are in-person hybrid. That's actually a decrease by 1% from first semester. So, you know, a few more students moved over to the Virtual Academy. As we have talked at the last few meetings, we, our teachers will all officially begin the live streaming, or as educators call it, concurrent teaching. This actually has an educational This actually has a educational term now, so it said it's concurrent teaching, so all of our teachers will officially begin on Monday, but many of our middle school teachers have gotten start with that. We are going to be resuming extracurricular opportunities in person at the middle school level, starting at the beginning of the semester as well. The next item has to do with Wednesday, the Wednesday schedule. Just a recap, so the middle school in-person hybrid model functions this way. There's two days in-person, two days were asynchronous, and one day was remote, where both cohorts had the opportunity to see one another. So we had three days of synchronous learning. When we added the live streaming element, we moved to four days of synchronous learning opportunities. And the idea there was we would be functioning the same way as the high school, and we would change the Wednesday to a fully asynchronous day. As we're approaching the semester beginning, we're continuing to talk about that implementation, and we've hit a point where we've talked about, we're not sure if that's the best choice for middle school. We know that our middle school students have struggled in a fully asynchronous model. We've heard that from students, we've heard that from parents, we've heard that from teachers. We know it's been very difficult for them without a structure or a schedule. We know that they have difficulty without access to their teacher for instructional supports, and we know this world is isolating. And to have a day when they don't have another day where they don't have the opportunity to connect with peers and teachers is difficult. We also know that our teachers will tell you that it's, the hybrid model is very difficult to help students individually, very difficult to help struggling students. They'll also tell you, and you actually heard this tonight from Mrs. Young, she talked about engagement in lesson design, and how hard it is to plan in this environment, especially when you're designing lessons that are for students that are sitting in front of you and students that are on the screen at the same time. So we have this struggle of how to accommodate all of these things. And so we are currently in conversations with our teachers and our administrators on how to best organize that Wednesday to meet the needs of our students. So we will have a new revised structure for remote Wednesdays that will go into, that will start on February 17th. We also are working at the middle school level right now. We are evaluating our space, number of open seats that we will have, so that we can expand the number of students that can attend more than two days a week. So we are working on that now. We have expanded the number attending more than two days a week, and we'll continue to do that, and we hope to have that all in place by the very beginning of March. And then lastly, we know that at the high school level, we had many conversations about attendance and how we had students that may have selected the hybrid model, but were choosing to come some days and not other days. We haven't had that problem at the middle school level, but it's something that we are going to monitor, and we are going to continue to look at. And if we do need to revise our attendance policy at the middle school level, that will be work we'll be doing as well. And I know that's something that Dr. Kyle is going to be speaking to you about tonight as well.
Thanks, Melissa, and thanks for the Board of Education. One of the things we've been working on at the high school level, our high school hybrid learning model, we've probably had 13 meetings with about 27 teachers, department chairs, administrators, looking at how we can improve the hybrid model. And one of the goals that we've been focusing all of our efforts on is to make sure that we continue to maximize the in-person learning experiences by increasing seats through a systemic equitable process that includes students in all courses and grade levels. What we heard very loud and clear from our teachers was, back in October when students came back, semester one, when 12 were in front of them and 12 were online, it was good. But then Weeks Three and Four, when it could drop down to five or three, that was not good. So we're really working, a lot of our energy since this last pause has been, how can we address that? How can we make sure we give offerings of open seats to those that need it and then those that want? So my goal here is, I don't normally work on an in-person hybrid attendance policy, but we've been working on this. And really what this is about is, I'm going to switch to this next slide really quick. And if you look at the selection that parents and students have made second semester, with total enrollment, hybrid 63%, at Wheaton North, hybrid 62% at Wheaton North South. That's really at South, that's the same percentage as first semester, so nothing's changed. At North, it's one percentile down for hybrid, one up for remote. So we have those numbers, but we don't know for sure until second semester starts if those numbers are correct. I think it was the second-to-last speaker at the last board meeting that said, "My child chose hybrid. I hope that anybody else who chooses hybrid, that their students come to school." We really want them to come to school. So one of the pieces that we're working on, and John, I think I can click on this, here we go. So it's this in-person hybrid attendance policy. And we've had the deans from both high schools, assistant principals, and this high school reopening committee look at this new policy. And our goal really is, our priority for second semester is high-quality learning experiences, consistency in planning and delivery of instruction. When a teacher expects 12 kids to be there and two show up, that's not a good thing for the kids, and it's not a good thing for the teachers. Moving forward through the curriculum and flexibility for major life events. So background is, in a nutshell, we listened to the teachers, they said this is an important piece for us to put our energy into it. And our goal is really, if you look at the bottom, we've got three unexcused absences, and what that will trigger is a counselor, a dean, a student, and a parent talking about why they're not there. In the absence of anybody getting back to the dean or the counselor about that meeting, they may have made their choice that they're going to go to e-learning, but this year we have e-learning for those individuals. We will go through the process of having our teachers work through with each student that doesn't show up. We've talked about some invalid reasons. We've heard a lot, like, "I'm quarantining for a vacation that's coming up," or "I'm quarantining." We know it's safe at school. We have had no cases of students with our mitigating factors, so if somebody's going to self-quarantine and miss two weeks, those aren't excusable. Slept-in, overslept, voluntary vacation, a test or a quiz, you know, "I'm not coming to school because there's a test that day." Those are things we've heard. Forgot to attend school, missed the bus or another transportation, inclement weather, you know, school's not the same as it was in the past, non-school-sponsored sports, like, "Hey, my club team has a state final down in Florida, I'm going to miss the next three weeks." You know, we want these spots to be with kids that need it and want to be there. So what we're working on right now is this policy where there's excused absences, and we always have those. Those are related to COVID, those are related to flu-like symptoms, being sick, having a specialist appointment, a doctor's appointment, even college visits, if those are even in-person anymore. But we've worked through, there's excused, there's unexcused. And really where we're at is, it's not the first time, it's not the second time, but the third time will be a conversation. And if it's a situation where that person picked in-person and they really don't want to be there, then we just need to put them in e-learning for the rest of the semester and then open up that spot for other individuals that could be there. So there's some codes that we're working through. Obviously, present but virtual is a new code that's been created through this hybrid learning. If a student shows up and they're still at school, they're still there, they're just not showing up in-person. So this policy right here is just for in-person attendance. We have a letter that both high schools are going to use. I'm going to click on it right here just to show, we're trying to be consistent with both sides, both high schools. It's basically a one, two, and three letter. We will also have our teachers, we will also have our teachers follow up with students if they miss a class. We have a script for our teachers, for an email script and a phone call script that we'd like them to use. The deans and assistant principals talked about, this is really important for the kids to be in school in person, and it's also important for the teachers to have students in person. So we are going to use a lot of our energy to make sure that we can have students attend in-person. The second piece to this that I just wanted to share with the board, and I have it highlighted and I'm pointing to it now, is in a normal school year, I think we're 10, 12, 10, 15, and 18 absences, and it triggers a conversation about, you know, why are you gone? What's happening? Do you get credit for your class? All those things happen in a normal year. But we're in a year that's pandemic. And we've had almost nine months to going on 10 months of this, and we do feel like we've seen not only some students not showing up in person, but some e-learning students just not showing up for any reason. So we're hoping to make it seven, 10, and 15. And then one of the pieces that we're going to use, you heard Dr. Schuler mention it, is if we have students that have missed a lot of school and their grades are showing, they didn't do very well, we're going to, we're going to offer up some opportunities this summer or even spring break to recapture some of the learning. We haven't figured out what everything is, and I know the February board meeting's there, but those are the pieces for the attendance that we're working on to make sure that we take care of one of the issues. We just had a public comment about engagement. This in-person hybrid attendance policy is just one piece. It's just one piece. The other piece, though, we had two board members come with me to visit Wheaton North back in December. And one of the things the teachers, and we have talked to the teachers about, is there's a survey that we gave out to the union and to students, and really, there's like a 30 to 35-minute window of screen time. That really is like that kind of sweet spot for teaching, and we're giving our teachers at the high school more freedom to have that ability to shut down the streaming when they need to and interact with the kids in front of them. And the kids that are outside will be working on the same project but in their house. But we've got to make an opportunity to engage the students who show up and to also make sure the students that are on e-learning still have the same learning. So our goal with this is, there's a board meeting tonight, we're going to send it out through the district tomorrow. Principals are going to communicate this new in-person hybrid attendance policy. You know, once implemented, we do look at our teachers and our deans, spending a lot of time those first three or four weeks of second semester, making sure we're on top of attendance. We are 10 months into a, into COVID-19 pandemic, but I think it's time, what we've heard from our teachers and what I think we need to do, is we need to have some structure and then open up those spots for kids that actually want to be there. And some need to be there, and others would want to be there. So this is the new in-person hybrid attendance policy that I wanted to share with the board. Jeff, is it good to ask questions or keep going? Okay, all right. So next is looking ahead. You saw the data here of who picked, and our hope is, anecdotally, parents and teachers have told me, they've heard kids say, "Oh, I'm just not showing up first semester, but second semester, I'll be there." If that's the case, that's great, but we have a plan in case that's not happening. So what's happening right now? You might want to know. How are we going to fill those spots? You're probably asking yourself that. Right now, we're looking at our room capacity and the number of open seats. Why are we waiting till February 1st? Because even though we have those percentages of parents who picked or students, young men and women, that picked in-person, first semester shows that that's not necessarily accurate. So we're starting the new attendance policy February 1st. Our staff, our problem-solving teams, and a data group are going to put together a team of people that are going to focus in on the students that really need to be there four days a week. So you've got February 5th is that deadline. Those seats that we know are open and we know who showed up, then we can start filling it with students that really need to be there four days a week. And it could be they need to be there because they're getting Ds and Fs. It could be because they've got Fs. It could be because they were A and B students and now they're C and D students. It could be SEL, like Dr. Solagi presents a lot of times about SEL. Those pieces are the needs part. Then the second part is seniors. It's their last semester. It's one of our lowest selected of all four levels. So once we get past the students that need to be here four days a week, we're going to focus in on the seniors. So we are going to survey our seniors, and we're going to survey our juniors, freshmen, and sophomores as well, and see if we have spots available, would you be willing to come in and fill one of those spots and show up and actually be there? We're, right now, we're identifying spaces, because at a high school, you may have a student who has an eight-period day, seven other classes, four of them may have room for every day, three of them may not. So we have lunch areas already selected, we're increasing our lunch area capacity to 50, but it's been pretty low for a semester. So we have, we have the spaces there. What we're working on now is getting extra spaces, almost like an overflow for the kids that come in four days a week, and maybe two of their classes are full, because we're not going to put in more than what we can in the classroom. They would go to an overflow, we would have a supervisor watching those students for those two classes that are in that room, and the other, the other six classes, they would head into the classroom four days a week. We're also, once we identify all the students, the students that are identified by staff that needs, we're hoping to start, our goal is February 15th and get those kids in four days a week, and assign any remaining seats between February 8th and March 1st. It starts with the students that need to be there four days a week, and we're almost like hand-scheduling, how many rooms do we have? How many opportunities do we have to do this? How many overflow rooms do we have that are available that we, then supervisors to supervise those? So we're working on that, and then March 1st is our deadline to make sure that we get seniors are first with the needs, and then we would go juniors, sophomores, and freshmen from there. So we are really looking at a way to systemically do this right, and I've had people say, "Can you just put all the kids in there?" Well, we could just say, "Everybody come," but then we're not following the six-feet social distancing, and we're not following the amount of kids that we can have in a class. So our goal is to start with the kids that really need to be there and then move to the wants. And I do believe that by March 1st, we will have a solidified, not only through the attendance policy, but also through targeting our students that need it and want to, we will have solidify classroom rosters where second semester can be a lot better than first semester. And part of it is, you have, you're targeting kids that could fill the spots, that need it and want to be there, but then part of it too is attendance. We're going to weed out the kids who really didn't want to be there, and if that happens, that's okay. But we want to make sure second semester, we have kids coming in. Couple things we've added since the last time I met with all of you. Bands started performing indoors about three weeks ago. Choir's going to start next week. As Dr. Schuler said, and I think there's a slide on it, IHSA approved six sports that are low-risk to start, and actually today, I'll get to that, IHSA approved other sports to start contact days, so we went down to Phase Four Tier One. So right now, all of our sports at the high school are starting their contact days. Extracurricular clubs can start meeting in person again, following six-feet social distancing. And then here's just an update that I linked to this because I knew I wouldn't be able to read it, but the IHSA, I really have to tell you, as a parent of a senior who plays volleyball, all sports are back on the table right now. If we stay in Phase Four and we don't go back to any Tier Two or Tier Three mitigations and we stay where we're at, they just came out with all of the different sports and when they're going to be played. And boys' basketball and girls' basketball is like coming in next week, they're going to start, and then we have almost two winters and a spring season. So the ADs have been working really hard at both high schools. It's overwhelming, but they've been working on this for a long time to make sure that our student athletes are able to compete, have gym time for practices. And really, what we're looking at second semester at middle school and high school, Melissa Murphy talked about middle school. Next week, we start contact days for sports at the middle school, and we're really looking for one more sport season at the middle schools, track and field. It's outdoors, and it's the one we think we could pull off. So we're starting to plan for track and field at the middle school, and then all the other sports at the middle school. Some of the middle schools have already invited kids for basketball, volleyball, intramurals. Our goal at the high school and even at the middle school is to continue to give students reasons to come to school, whether that be the engagement of the lesson, whether that be singing, playing an instrument, or coming for after-school sports and/or extracurriculars. So those are some of the things that we've worked pretty hard making sure we can do. And then one of the last things I wanted to present, just if you remember the class of 2020, we were pretty saddened about what happened with them. I think I'm saddened for the class of 2021 as well, because this has been a tough year for them. So both principals, myself, Dr. Schuler, a number of SSC members, parents, and students, teachers, will all get together and we're going to start looking at how we can honor the class of 2020. will all get together and we're gonna start looking at how we can honor the class of 2021. It's important for all of us. And it's even one of those years that it's important that both, both high schools kinda work together on how we're gonna do things. Some of the things we're gonna talk about is senior recognition. Um, is there a possibility for prom? Graduation. Um, graduation's gonna be one of those things that we look at on a tiered plan. Can we have fifty, a hundred, a hundred-and-fifty, two-fifty, five-hundred? How do we do it? And how do we give the, this class a graduation? So we're planning on that right now. I don't have definitive plans, but I'll tell you, we will, we will provide a graduation and we'll work through this. So our teams are committed, our teams committed to make sure, uh, this senior year, the end of the senior year, that second semester, we recognize this class and we give them opportunities. Um, and I just wanted the board to know that. That's been on the mind of both leaders of both high schools. They've talked about it a lot, but we're at the point now where things are starting to change in the state of Illinois, that I think it's time to start putting plans in place and starting making sure that it happens at both high schools. I think next is Dr. Sagi.
Yeah, just one quick clarification before, um, we come back to the surveillance testing on the IHSA, uh, piece with the, with the sports. So again, uh, all, all sports have been identified now with a competitive season. Um, all of the sports that are within season can continue now to actually, to, it can begin meeting and, and practicing. Sports that are out of season now have a designated number of contact opportunities or days that they can meet with, with students. The sports, though, that are still classified as high-risk, or the highest risk, we do need to move into phase four. Move out of tier-one and into phase four before the actual competitions can start. So, um, the, the path has been cleared. I think our data at a community level is moving in a positive direction as we continue. We haven't presented that the last couple of meetings, the, the kind of the community-wide, uh, transmission rates. But it's moving in a positive direction. But it does need to continue to, uh, to do that over, really, the next few days and, and week to likely move us as a region into or back to phase four. That's, uh, that, the activities, the teams can meet and they can practice. But that's the final hurdle we wanna make sure that they can get through is that we not only want our kids to have an opportunity to practice and be with the team. If possible, we want them to be able to compete. That's part of the, the activity. And we do need to clear that final hurdle as, uh, a region. And just as a reminder, our region is comprised of DuPage and Kane County together as we, we travel that. All right, Dr. Sagi, you wanna pick up on the surveillance testing?
Thank you, Dr. Schuler, uh, members of Board of Education. So, uh, we are in, uh, now, we just yesterday started our fourth week of surveillance testing. Um, so this was actually what we would consider round two. And when I say round two, this is, uh, the, uh, now the, the second group. So the second opportunity for, for more members of our school community to opt in. As a reminder, surveillance testing is offered for our sixth through twelfth-grade students. Also, um, all of our sixth through twelfth-grade staff, uh, members of our transition as well. And then, um, our early childhood staff and any staff members that are, um, uh, instructing in a specialized program, program where distancing may not be, uh, be able to be maintained. Uh, I think it's important to note, though, as we continue to talk about expanding opportunities for our students, we've talked a little bit about that, certainly at the secondary level, uh, we hear more and more that, uh, that surveillance testing is really a significant mitigation strategy. So, um, you know, as we look to the future, this participation, uh, we, we believe will be allow, allow us to continue to expand opportunities for students. Uh, we continue to look at this in three-week chunks as we offer it to the, our school community. So the, uh, next opportunity to opt in for our school community will be February eighth. If they do so, they'll be able to start participating, um, March first. We just had a, a previous piece where January twenty-fifth, we had the opportunity for more students to opt in as well. So, uh, we continue to, to move forward with, with this opportunity, um, having students participate. And, uh, each week, um, we believe it's a, a significant mitigation strategy for us.
Thanks, Dr. Sagi. And again, I'll just mention in light of some of the, the other topics that we just talked about as we look at the expansion of extracurricular opportunities and some of the things that are gonna keep students, uh, after school, I, I would strongly encourage our families to look at surveillance testing if they're not opting in, especially when it comes to participation in some of those opportunities. Not required, but I think it would be strongly encouraged, especially as we continue to, to look at that. Um, last two topics that we just wanna, wanna give an update on quickly, one is vaccine. Uh, so we mentioned at the, the last board meeting, uh, that, uh, we were partnering with the county on, uh, creating a plan this week. DuPage County officially moved into Group One B of the, the vaccine rollout. So we have developed a, a plan, put together, uh, a plan for a vaccine clinic to be offered, uh, in District Two Hundred. That's done. We've actually, uh, secured two potential partners. One, uh, obviously is a partner that already has a PIN, is ready to administer vaccine. We've been working with another provider that is awaiting on, uh, PIN to be approved. So we'll have two options for how we can actually staff that clinic and get, uh, shots in, in arms as soon as we get an allocation from, uh, DuPage County Health Department. So we are ready to, to go on that. We've identified two potential school locations that would work as a, a vaccine clinic. We've actually identified both, uh, a high school, uh, option that would work well, but we've actually also looked at an elementary school option. And so, um, you might kinda wonder why an elementary school rather than high school, big building. The reality, especially with, uh, a lot of what's gonna be going on at the high school now with expanded activity opportunities, um, we wanna make sure that the vaccine clinic is geared up so that it can work whenever the shots are available. And so, uh, working at a high school or even working at, uh, at a Hubble, we'd be somewhat limited into how that schedule could work in terms of potentially interference with students, uh, in the building. And what we know at some of our elementary schools, we do have spaces in some of our schools that aren't currently being used for students. Dr. Sagi mentioned gyms, multipurpose rooms that are not being used during the day. So again, we wanna just make sure that not only do we have options that functionally would work well, but that we know would be available at any point that we needed, um, uh, to, to stand up as a vaccine clinic. Um, we have also, uh, found an additional, uh, partnership with DuPage Medical Group. Um, so DuPage Medical Group is not currently partnering with school districts to come and do onsite, uh, vaccine clinics. But they have stood up several of their own vaccine sites and are looking to continue to, uh, to expand that. And so, um, we've been able to, to partner with them in actually another route that will make vaccine sites available to, uh, our staff. So, um, we're working through the, the process of standing up our, our staff list, um, with DuPage Medical Group, which then has to work through a process. They have, as I talked to them today, um, the latest update is they anticipate by the second week, uh, in February, they will be in a position to, uh, to officially open that registration and, um, shot clinic up to our staff as well. So we're gonna have a couple of different options, both our own vaccine clinics, uh, and the options through, uh, DuPage Medical Group, which, uh, I think will, uh, will continue to be important. And I'll just mention, um, we advocate, uh, weekly, more than weekly, with, uh, DuPage County to, uh, support our effort to get our, our staff vaccinated because that flow of vaccine's gonna continue to come through the county. And then the final thing that, uh, we just wanna mention is around the, the topic of advocacy. Um, so, uh, we, we've continued to have conversation both at the board level. And I know the board has received, uh, input from, uh, members of the community around this question of, uh, so at what point can guidelines, guidance, um, be updated? So we have two, uh, advocacy groups that we spend, uh, a considerable amount of time with. Lend, Lend is the Legislative Advocacy Group in DuPage County. And then LUDA, which is the Large Unit District Association. Both of those entities, we've continued to work with in partnership with, uh, um, some of our state providers to really look into that, that topic of as vaccine continues to happen, roll out, uh, as we continue to see adjustments, changes in, uh, community transmission numbers, those pieces, uh, happen, um, as, uh, as we, we continue to see surveillance testing as an option that's showing positive results. When I say positive results, meaning no results of clinical significance, as we see those pieces come together, I absolutely think that there's a, there is, there should be a path to continue to see guidance, uh, adjust. And, and I mentioned, uh, on this slide as well, um, there have been a number of different resources that have come out recently, have been referenced, um, from, um, CDC, some other studies that, uh, have come out that have talked about the fact that, um, there are paths to continue to not only have kids in school like we have, but expand opportunities for, um, students that are, that are in school. But those efforts need to continue to focus not on this idea of there being no cases of COVID in and around the community, but there being no cases of transmission within the, the school. And again, uh, how do you do that in all of those? Um, you do have good infection control measures. You do have mitigation efforts, uh, that are in place. Um, you continue to have testing, whether they be screening or surveillance options. Vaccine is mentioned in, uh, in a lot of those conversations. You continue to work closely and, uh, have a, have a trusting relationship with, um, your employee groups as you're, you're refining and putting plans in place. And then you collaborate with state agencies to look at the guidance that can be adjusted. And, and most notably in that is that idea of physical distancing. And are there paths in the future to see that shrink from the current six-foot definition that's recognized? And again, I've lots of, of, uh, different articles referenced recently that, that talk about, uh, kind of where that path would be in the future and, and looking at that. And we're gonna continue to stay active in that conversation. And I would, I would encourage the board to continue to stay active in that conversation with your association, with, uh, our county-wide levels to, to advocate for those opportunities. So, uh, I'm not recommending to the board tonight as a part of this planning that you abandon the current mitigation efforts that are in place, which include the physical distancing piece. But I think that is absolutely a conversation we need to continue to be a part of to see, um, when those opportunities can change and get us, uh, where we want to be, not only, uh, as we move through this school year, but obviously at the start of next school year. So that's a lot. We've given you, I think, a few different updates, but, uh, we'll stop there and, uh, answer any questions or clarify any questions you have.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler and staff. It was, as usual, a very complete and, and, uh, complicated process you are working through. Any board member wanna volunteer to ask, go first and ask some questions or make comments? Chris is raising her hand over here.
It's fine. Um, I, are we going to go through the entire presentation with questions? Or do you want it chunked? Or how would you prefer?
Ask questions, whoever you wanna ask questions.
Okay. So start with elementary. Do we, is it community numbers that we're looking for to move to that next step to be able to offer a longer day? Or, like, what is, you know, we talked about that length of in-person school day evaluation and possible expansion. Like, what's that thing that's going to move us to that next level of, of all-day? Do we know what that looks like yet? Is it a community number, uh, being in a different phase?
Yeah, I think it's, um, Chris, I think it's a combination of a few of those factors. But I do wanna mention and, and point out that, uh, I believe in, as Dr. Sagi and I have, have talked, in fairness, families made a selection for this trimester with an understanding of what that in-person opportunity looks like. I think in fairness, as we look to adjust that opportunity, we oughta be able to communicate that to families at a point where they obviously have the option of adjusting their choice, should they not be. So I, I, I think we are moving forward perhaps under the assumption that, uh, if we simply move to a full day, that everybody that's currently in-person would want that, that option. But understand that that comes with some significant adjustments to the day and lunch and movement during, uh, throughout the, the building and, uh, some things that pull kids out of that strictly cohorted model. And just my, my view is, obviously, we wanna make sure conditions tell us that it's, it's the right and the safe time to do that, that we have time to, obviously, work with our buildings and our teams to talk about any of those adjustments, but also that we have the ability to work with our families to, to notify them of that change. I think that's fair.
And I understand that for, you know, possibly the trimester, are we, is there an, a possibility that we wanna test it? That it would be a two-day-a-week thing, a one-day-a-week thing? See the logistics in, in that rather than jump to five days and then be like, "Oh, no, we, we, we can't do this." Is there, does it make sense to try piloting a one-day-a-week or two-days-a-week or a building or two, you know, to work through logistics? Just throwing that out there as a, as a thought. Um, for middle school, I know, Melissa, you mentioned, um, the February seventeenth. Um, when will we be sharing what that looks like for Wednesdays?
Um, as soon as our team finalizes that plan, we will communicate that with both our teachers and also our parent community. So it would be prior to that date.
And then, do we have, I guess this would go to Charlie. Do we have a plan to adjust Wednesday at all at high school?
Wednesday, right now, we work together with the union at the start of the school year on the asynchronous Wednesday. Um, what we focused our time at the reopening group at this point up until today has been how do we, uh, give teachers the freedom, uh, to engage the students that are in front of them and on e-learning and also the in-person attendance. So we just started talking about the asynchronous Wednesday. And, uh, we've just started the discussion right now. What it is very important, at least from, uh, representing what the teachers have talked about, is it's an opportunity for them to have that opportunity to catch up with those kids that are struggling, where in a regular day, it's not as easy. So we are looking at that. Um, but that's gonna be the focus of our next couple of meetings with this group.
Okay. And then in, in terms of athletics, um, what about our two-sport athletes? Are they going to be able to have, participate in, in more than one sport in the same season?
The ADs have been working and the conference has been working on even trying to set, uh, contests when they overlap on days. So, um, I can't guarantee that there might not be some overlap, but the conference and our ADs at both high schools are looking into that. They've been looking into making sure two-sport athletes have that opportunity to play both sports.
And then can we do for, um, maybe we can't compete at a conference level yet, but could we do in-district competitions? Are high schools play each other for that opportunity to have some kind of competition? Or is that even possible?
I think we're, uh, phase four, tier one. If we can get to phase four, I believe, and Dr. Schuler, correct me if I'm wrong, we can get to competitions even at wrestling. Um, so what we need to do is to get into phase four. And I'm being very positive because of the vaccines and the data that's coming around us. I have the feeling that we have an opportunity to get there, and we just need to stay there.
Yeah, Chris, we're gonna follow everything that's in the all-sports policy for what we can and can't do. So there are opportunities for inter-squad scrimmage and, uh, and, and competition. But, uh, again, two things. One, all of this literally just came out three o'clock this afternoon. And so, um, I wanna be really careful as I answer questions to say, obviously, our goal is to quickly share and expand the opportunities. I wanna, I wanna be careful that I do not over-promise something that we're still kind of digesting this information.
And then with vaccine, and, you know, I, I know it's, it's coming out in a slower plan than, um, Illinois had hoped, um, DuPage County had hoped. But if it comes out as, as, as we see and our teachers are able to have, say, two doses by, say, spring break, what does that mean for us? If we get our staff all vaccinated, does that change our plan in any way?
I don't know that the vaccine in and of itself necessarily changes the, the plan. It certainly creates an additional mitigation and safeguard, obviously, on the teacher's side. side. Maybe, help me understand your question a little bit more.
I guess I'm just trying, yeah, I'm just trying to understand, you know, if our adult staff all becomes vaccinated with both doses, does that mean we change anything within our system in terms of, are we bringing more students in now that we have this extra layer of protection for our staff? I'm just trying to understand, you know, if anything is changing once everybody is vaccinated.
Yeah. Chris, I guess I'll answer that by saying, my assumption is that the board is going to continue to ask critical questions on how our plans evolve. I will tell you honestly that we have the plan that we're bringing to you tonight on how things are expanding right now. I don't have a definitive, when vaccine is done, this is what it...
Let me rephrase that. Has DuPage County Health Department said anything to us?
No.
Once a majority of our people are vaccinated? That's what I was getting, that's more what I'm getting at.
No, the county health department has not specifically indicated that it will automatically trigger any kind of guidance change on their side.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at. You know, and I guess then my final question is, you know, we've been sent a lot of articles, you've been all reading lots of articles, you know, that the CDC is saying, you know, it's safe, but they're also using the, with social distancing still happening. I guess my question is, is should they change the six feet to three feet? What does that do? Does that trigger more space for students? Does it trigger, everybody comes, like what does three feet look like, should they come out with that?
Yeah. Well, so three feet versus six feet, right? We are currently operating at six feet. My quick math would tell me it doubles the current capacity inside of our classroom. So I think if you move down to three feet, that's a typical standard classroom setup. That's the way that our desks are likely set up during a regular school year. So yes, I think it would open up space for us to be able to accommodate all students.
Okay. Thank you. That's all my questions.
First, as always, thank you very much, Dr. Schuler and the senior leadership team for all the work and thought that you are continually, continuously putting into these plans and rethinking them. And I think it's a very positive occurrence that every, past several times we've come to these meetings, there have been updates and progress of moving forward to the goal that we all have of having kids in person. And so I appreciate that work. I know that there is, a lot of this information came out today on sports. Is there any discussion on the arts, plays, show choir? I mean, I know singing and band that creates a little bit different opportunity, but I know there's a lot of emphasis on sports, but what about the arts?
Yeah, no, fair question. So I think mentioned on the slide on athletic and extracurriculars, we currently have, there are currently 21 clubs across the two high schools that are meeting either in person or in some type of hybrid format. Those do cross the gamut of some of our performing groups and ensembles, some of our service, on service clubs and groups. So yeah, I mean, actually, if you looked at it just in terms of numbers, there are more extracurricular activities that are currently meeting right now than sports teams that are currently meeting. And again, that is just a small portion of the total number of clubs. I think outside of that 21 on the list, there are another 38 or 39 clubs that are still meeting virtually, and I would imagine as we move through the year, that will continue to evolve. One of the things that Dr. Kyle did mention is that we've continued to look at opportunities for performing ensembles, especially singing, and there are some very strict mitigations and guidelines that you have to follow if you're doing any of that inside of a building. And we've had teams working with Dr. Kyle very hard on what does that look like and how can we do that safely? So yeah, I don't hope that our message tonight isn't dismissing or underselling the importance of our clubs and our performing ensembles. They're working too.
And I think the last play, the spring plays, both high schools are also looking for like an outdoor venue where they could do it outside, act like so. They are, both high schools, working on that right now to find a location. It may end up being the football field, which sounds easy now, but when you have so many sports, finding times where you could perform outside. So I know that both high schools are looking at that spring play to be outdoors, be able to do socially distancing and follow all the rules that are out there.
Before we go further, have we talked to the Wheaton Park District about the new benchell at its memorial park downtown Wheaton? That might be a venue.
I think people are talking to them. I don't know if that was successful or not because I haven't been to North in a couple of weeks, but last time I talked is, we are reaching out to different locations to see where we could have performances outside.
For, I believe this was at the high school level, for the overflow rooms that you're looking at, how, I guess if you have a number of kids in there, how do they, we have a lot of kids participating in different classes at the same time, and they're kind of talking to each other with earbuds on, like, do you, I guess, how does that work if they're in an overflow room? Because I'm assuming they're in an overflow room because, like, periods one and two, they could go to be in-person, but three and four, there wasn't a space for them, so they have to go to the overflow room. Is that correct what I'm, and then you have multiple kids in the room who's, you know, you've got some doing German, you've got some doing, you know, social, you know, things that you're participating and talking. And so is that going to be kind of, how's that going to work? Because I just feel like you have a lot of kids talking about different things at the same time participating.
Yeah. So I mean, it's going to work with a lot of coordination. So I think it's, you not only have to have the spaceship to know kind of who's in what space and for what purpose, to make sure that we can address any of the potential noise interference. Bottom line is, every kid's going to have headphones in that, which is going to inherently help with that. But Susan, we'll work it out. Again, I think the message in that is that we don't want to let a situation where if we can accommodate a student for almost all of their classes, we don't want to say no to the student because we perhaps have one or two classes that can't work. So that's going to be the solution, and candidly, as we implement it, if it's not perfect, then we got to make some adjustments. I'm confident that our teams will make the adjustments, and it may even be that, you know, if we end up in some of those situations, that a student who is designated to be in that overflow area, the reality is, some kids are still going to be gone for class for a variety of reasons. And so I think the anticipation is, there's probably some degree of flexibility in how that will work.
Okay. Is there any discussion on, for the athletic participation on, I know we brought on requiring surveillance testing to participate, or is that, are we going to stay with an opt-in situation with those types of activities?
Yeah. My recommendation is still an opt-in unless the board, as a group, if the board feels otherwise and wants to direct us otherwise, obviously, the board has the ability to do that. My recommendation, though, isn't changed around it.
Okay. Thank you. For vaccine, my understanding is that it is not mandated, correct?
Correct.
Are, do you have any initial feelings about, are teachers overall willing to be vaccinated? Is there a concern on that part? Will we, I mean, certainly no private information or anything, but will we know percentage-wise, how many, once we're kind of through it, how many teachers of our teachers are vaccinated? Is that something that we can know, or is that in, you know, under privacy?
It's certainly something that we'll know as a part of their health record. I don't know that it's...
Not individually, I meant, like, will we be able to know, 75% of our teachers became vaccinated? That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying at the individual level.
Yeah, no, we'll know it. I think your second question is, do I have the ability or do we have the authority to share that publicly? I don't want to commit an answer to that. Again, I think...
That's fine. I'm just...
Yeah, our primary concern is getting them through. What I will tell you is, we did do a survey in conjunction with our two associations at the, kind of the front end of winter break to just see what interest would be, and there was very strong interest.
Okay, good. Thanks. And then I just wanted to take a few minutes to address some of the articles and information that we've been receiving from a certain part of the community around the distancing. And I think, as you've said, there's a lot of information coming out right now, and we get sent information, and I, and I think when you start diving into the details of these articles and the studies that they reference, that I think it's really important to understand those details. And I'm kind of a data nerd, and I like digging deep into those things. And I just want to read into the record here that, again, we all share the same goal of getting our kids back in school. And I, the Brown University study that Dr. Schuler mentioned, you know, I read through that, and, you know, and I asked Dr. Schuler, how do we, how do we be a little bit more of a nuisance about this? How do we, you know, advocate, as he addressed, you know, to have our public health departments, you know, at the state level, at the local level, look at this information as it comes out to see if it's feasible in our area based on numbers and that kind of thing. So I just want to talk about this for just a minute and read this into the public record that, so one of the articles that was sent to us is an opinion piece that appeared in the Washington Post in November, and that, the opinion piece was referencing studies that they were saying supports the three-foot distance. And I just want to point that this was an evaluation of 172 studies in 16 countries that found a significant reduction in risk with distancing of at least three feet, but no additional benefit at six feet. And then this part in the article is actually italicized for reference, "so long as baseline risk is low enough," which is saying, when community spread is low, then we can discuss the three-foot distance. So I think that's a really important point to point out, and I will get to American Academy of Pediatrics and CDC in a moment, that all reference that same type of information. And I think that that is just very important to understand that, that it's, you know, again, it references, again, there is no question, risk is higher at close range, but where community spread is low, three feet of physical distancing should suffice. So this study too, that's also referencing this op-ed, was done from March through May of 2020, so at the very, very beginning of the pandemic. None of these studies were randomized control studies, they were all observational, which I don't disagree with at that point in time because we had to go by observational information at that point in time. But I, at this point in time, I think that's important to know, that these were observational. And the actual study that this article is referencing, I went in and read it, most of it, not all, it was long, but it says, "transmission of viruses was lower with, was lower with physical distancing of one meter or more compared with a distance of one meter or less." And it also says, "robust randomized trials are needed to better inform the evidence for these interventions." So again, this was an observational study, and it's specifically saying randomized trials need to be done to support it. So I just think that that's really important to point out, and that also, at the end of this op-ed, it says, and I think this last paragraph really supports what we're doing and what we have always done. "As cases rise in the United States, we acknowledge that there will be cases in schools. We should also be prepared to adapt our strategies accordingly. If cases quickly, I'm sorry, if cases rise quickly in a region, schools should not automatically close, rather the level of controls should increase, hence the surveillance testing that we have put in." That might mean the six-foot rule could come back for high schools, while the three-foot rules could remain for our younger grades. "If high levels of community spread emerge and school closures, closures become warranted, high schools should close first, then middle schools. Elementary schools should close last, if at all," which is exactly what we have done. Our elementary has never closed. "Most important, schools should be prioritized over bars and restaurants." So I just want to read that into the record because we've had several people send us this op-ed saying, "Look, you need to do three-foot distancing." That's not what this is saying. It's saying, "when community transmission is low," which we are not, we have been in substantial for I don't know how many weeks now. I keep, I actually keep, at the back of my notebook here, I'm sorry if you doesn't like, can't see that, but I keep this on the back. I go onto Page County Health Department every week, and I write this down with a positivity rate, our cases per 100,000, and a plus or minus percentage of our youth rate. So I can see the trend all through these past weeks. And we've been substantial for a long, long time. We don't, we don't fall into a low community spread at this point in time. Okay. Moving on to CDC, as of January 26th of 2021, they, this is a really great report. It's actually pretty short. It's only four pages. They reference several studies that show that spread is not happening in schools when mitigations are in place. 11 school districts in North Carolina, 17 K-throughs, 12 schools in rural Wisconsin, with high mask adherence, COVID-19 incidents was lower in schools than in a community. Fantastic. Great news. In Israel, in May, there was a large high school outbreak where it started with two students who had unrelated infections and mild symptoms that led to a huge outbreak in that high school. 153 student cases, 25 cases in staff. Contributing factors to this outbreak included crowded classrooms with insufficient physical distancing, e.g., student density in classrooms exceeded recommended values, exemption from face mask use, and continuous air conditioning that recycled interior air in closed rooms during a heat wave. So again, it shows that what they're saying, that if you throw out your guidelines, that here's a case where that went pretty poorly. And CDC goes on to say, "preventing transmission in school settings will require addressing and reducing levels of transmission in surrounding communities through policies to interrupt transmission, e.g., restrictions on indoor dining at restaurants. In addition, all recommended mitigation measures in schools must continue, required, which include: requiring universal face mask use, increasing physical distance by de-densifying classrooms and common areas using hybrid attendance models when needed to limit the number of contacts and prevent crowding, increasing room air ventilation, and expanding screening testing to rapidly identify and isolate asymptomatic infected individuals." We're doing all of that. January 26th, this came out. So it's, we're able to have school because these things are working. All right. Last that I would like to read into the record here is American Academy of Pediatrics, which has been, excuse me, has been referenced several times. The last update was January 5th of 2021. "Physical distance between desks should follow current public health guidance." Our current public health guidance from IDPH, DuPage County Health Department, is six feet. They go on to say, "and desks should be placed at least three feet apart and ideally six feet apart." And then they've actually bolded this sentence here, "schools should weigh the benefits of strict adherence to a six-feet spacing rule between students with the potential downside if remote learning is the only alternative." That is not the case in our district. A fully remote learning model is not the alternative in our district. not the alternative in our district. Um, they also point out that adults within schools should maintain a distance of six feet from other people as much as possible. Now, they go on to break down pre-K guidelines, elementary guidelines, and secondary school guidelines. Secondary would include middle school and high school. In elementary, children should wear cloth face coverings. Desk should be placed at least three feet apart and ideally six feet apart. And it reduce, and if this reduces the amount of time children are present in school, harm may outweigh potential benefits. Now, as Dr. Sallaghi stated earlier, and please correct me if I'm wrong, or Dr. Schuler, that we are, the way that our desks are spaced six feet apart in our elementary is not preventing any student from attending elementary school at this moment in time.
It's not with the caveat that we have had some situations where students want to come back to their home school, and their home school has, is out of space in classrooms at a particular grade level, in which case we have then offered that, that family an opportunity to attend at a different school, space-wise, so, um, but anybody who wants to come back to in-person, we will have a space for them, and on the most part, it's been at their home school.
Okay, thank you. So, and I know that the Brown University study, um, that Dr. Schuler shared with us, that, um, that had a lot of good information about supporting a potential three-foot spacing at elementary school. Um, but even that reference, that in middle school and high school, that the, that six-foot should be maintained, um, if you're over 100 cases per 100,000, and we have been well over 100 cases per 100,000 in our county, and even just in the zip codes of our school district. Um, I just checked before I came here, and, um, and the Northwestern site with just our school district zip codes were at 197 per 100,000. Um, at the county, um, as of 116, we're at 286 per 100,000. So, um, and then for secondary schools, again, again, this is American Academy of Pediatrics from early January, "Universal cloth face, cloth face coverings in middle schools and high schools, um, are recommended, and desk should be placed six feet apart when feasible." Now, notice the difference here. In elementary, under elementary, they said desk should be placed at least three feet apart and ideally six feet apart, but in, uh, secondary school, they say they should be placed six feet apart when feasible. So they're not really offering that three-foot at the, at the middle school and high school level, level. Um, "Teacher and other staff should maintain a, a distance of six feet from students when possible. Educate students and families on the importance of mitigation measures when not in the school building, and avoid crowded hallways." So I just, I know there's a lot, I'm sorry for talking so much, but I just really felt the need to read that into the public record, that I, I do, I want to say, I very much appreciate when people send articles to us. I just sometimes not sure that some, I think some of the details of that is missed. Um, we were sent this afternoon, um, a bunch of articles, again, referencing this three-foot, and one of the states, and I didn't have time just because when it came through, to go through everything, but there was a reference to Michigan, and there was an article there from July 6th of 2020 that, and at that point in time, it referenced some guidelines, guidelines that were put out by the state and the governor, that did not, their initial school guidelines did not include a social distance, um, requirement or recommendation in that document, and it was kind of leaving it up to the schools to do that. Now, I know Michigan, and I didn't have time to really look into what happened in, between the start of school in December, but I know schools in Michigan were out in remote for several times because they had surges there. And then in the new guidance that was also included, um, in those links from Michigan, that, um, I, and I found an article from January 8th, that the governor, the new recommendations that the governor's now is recommending a six-foot distance. And it actually says on the first page of the news guided, of the new guidelines, "Prior guidance is now obsolete", referencing that June 30th document. And, um, and then again, in Ohio, it's six feet, and it's three feet only if it's needed and mask are mandatory. So again, devils, devils in the details, and because I really want to try to understand this issue. And I am with you, I, I think with you, community, if we can, and I know that Dr. Schuler referenced this in his presentation, that if we can work with our advocacy to get some of these guidelines, um, changed when it is backed by science and it's feasible and doable, I think we should absolutely do that. But these organizations, as of yet, have to really come out full force and say, you know what, this is the, this is what we can do now. So I, again, I, I just wanted to read that into the record, that this is something very much on our radar, and when the time is right, we will do it. But current guidelines from CDC, American Academy of Pediatrics, Illinois Department of Public Health, DuPage County Health Department, is still saying six feet, and that's what we need to do. So, um-
I think that's enough for me.
So, thank you.
Thank you for that, Susan. Lots of detail and research went into that, and appreciate, I appreciate that, because it is some inconsistencies we get through email. Rob, any comments?
I just have one question related to the IHSA, uh, slide on 13, which is when we moved, state moves to phase four, we, high-risk sports, uh, can start up, right? Um, that causes concern for me. It's, I'm happy for the athletes, no doubt, right? But one of our objective was, objectives of bringing kids back into school is keeping them in school. And I, I struggle with mandatory surveillance testing. I, I don't, I just can't get there, right? But I do think we can ask our athletic directors, or, or somebody, to, uh, give us, um, the procedures or the guidelines they're going to follow to keep those athletes safe. That's what I'd really like to know. Um, and if they choose to do, to, to, if the athletes choose to opt in, great, but I would like to know that plan. So we've always said we're going to follow the guidance of state and local, uh, and includes IHSA, their recommendation. Uh, but I do think we owe it to our entire student population. I know, how are we going to keep those students safe, and then keep that from, if there is an outbreak, like we've seen in other professional sports, tracking into the schools. So I'd appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you, Rob. Jenna, you want to make some comments?
I have a few questions. Um, of the, ending the elementary school day and being able to get the, um, we've had such, uh, good luck with what we've been doing with them so far. I, I am wondering when you go to poll kids, um, to see who would want to continue to attend, if you change that for third trimester, and I appreciate that you have to see second trimester through, because that's what, you have to let people have what they signed up for. Um, I'm curious as to whether we might see a surge in kids coming back, because I thought we were hearing early on that some families felt like they had no choice but to choose remote because the timing of our school day from nine to one was problematic for them, that they, their kids had to be somewhere all day, they didn't have the ability to come get them at one o'clock. So might that open the gates, and, and are we prepared to, does that mean we'll have to shuffle around teachers, or, you know, recount classrooms in each building? Is that something that we're kind of prepared for?
It's something we will be prepared for based on whatever options, uh, are, are developed and pushed out. So, uh, we will be prepared for that, absolutely.
Okay, good. I just wondered if that might be a potential. Um, can you remind me, what has our attendance rate been in elementary school? Are those kids continuing to show up for class, those who opted for in-person?
Yeah, it, it's been really strong, uh, in the 90s, typically in the mid, low to mid 90s, which, which really means any other year. The only time we, when we saw that number start to come down into the low 90s, might have been around 89, 90%, was those few weeks in, um, in November, when we saw higher transmission rates and we had more students quarantined. That's when we saw that come down, but we've seen that come back up, and typically it's tracking around 93, 94, 95. At the beginning, 96, 97%. So students are showing up unless they are sick or, or quarantined.
Okay.
Last thing I'll say tied to that is what we have not seen this year in our schools is absences for other sick-related reasons, right? The, we track very closely, like COVID-related absences. In fact, I have a real-time dashboard every day that allows me to, to the minute to track how many kids we have out for any reason, and, and non-COVID stuff has been very, very low.
Um, I have another question for Dr. Sallaghi. When you talk about focusing on engaging disconnected students, how are you evaluating what a disconnected student is at the elementary school level?
I'll start here, but I'm also going to let Mrs. Murphy talk a little bit here. Um, just from the first pieces, who is in attendance in Virtual Academy consistently, and who's not, right? So just simply been monitoring attendance to start with. But also, when I make that comment, I'm thinking even on a more broader space, all of our Virtual Academy students, even those that are engaged and connected in the Virtual Academy Day, I do believe we, we want to change our mindsets to, there's going to be a day when they're coming back to our schools, and we want to make sure that we're connecting them to, to their home school as well. But on the more granular level, our students that are not engaged, attendance is one piece. I want to let Mrs. Murphy talk a little bit about how they've identified some of the students as well.
Sure. Um, so we, we obviously looked at the number of days. They did not attend sessions virtually, as Dr. Sallaghi said, but Mrs. Moran worked with every teacher in the Virtual Academy and looked at every student, and teachers actually identified students they were most worried about and wanted homeschool's partnership and re-engaging those families. So, um, every elementary principal received a list of teacher, or students that, um, the Virtual Academy teachers identified.
Great. I really appreciate that initiative. I think that's a great thing. Because we are hearing from a lot of parents, even kids who are learning remotely, either by choice or on their remote days, that how, um, they're suffering. Um, and so it is, I appreciate that we're not just taking it at face value, that if they're on the screen, they must be fine, um, but we're connecting with them. So thank you for that initiative. Um, let's see. Can we, um, for Dr. Kyle, can we see the attendance policy in the letters and that sort of thing at some point? Is that something you will post that we could see? I know there's a link in your, um, presentation, but we don't have an electronic copy of that at the moment. Will we be able to see that?
Absolutely.
Okay, good. Um, and I had the same question that Susan did, you know, whether we'll have a sense of what percentage of our teachers are opting in for vaccinations, just so we understand, not only who's, who within our population has been vaccinated, but just to understand the feelings of our teachers, because we don't always know exactly, um, you know, what the opinions and mindset is of our teachers.
Just, it's come up twice. I didn't talk to it during my time, but I struggle with that a little bit. I struggle with us knowing, you know, too much data, that's personal data. Um, and so I'd, I'd like us to be clear on why we would like to know that, what we want to do with it. And we could talk about it. I'm not saying no, I'm just saying I'd like to know more about it, right? Because if we don't really need to know, we don't need to know. And I don't want to cross over or even get close to privacy, uh, to things that can cause privacy concerns for our teachers. Um, just, this is something I want to talk more about.
And I, I appreciate that. And I, so that's maybe something to have a discussion on at some point, too, because I guess my thought was just, for people who want their kids to come back to school, but they're keeping them at home because they're concerned, will they feel safer if they feel like people have been vaccinated? So is there some way to just gauge, you know, what the environment looks like that we're asking them to choose or not choose? So I, yeah, I don't know how you figure out where that line is either. And I guess, maybe that goes without saying, but will we hear whether the teachers who want to get vaccinated, whether we're able to accommodate the, the teachers who want to get vaccinated? I know there's all, all sorts of questions about what the supply is versus the demand, but something to hear about going forward?
Again, in specific health records, I can, Jahan, I think mine's going out. I, I can share with, with the board what our supply chain looks like. That is not-
That's what I'm asking.
That is not private information.
Yeah, okay.
And I do want to just point out, uh, in electronic school board, you do have an electronic copy of the presentation that's in front of you, and it does have the link in it to the attendance policy.
And have we been told at this point, our round two of surveillance testing, what the, did the percentages change, and the percentage of people opting in?
Yeah, similar percentage number. We had a lot more people that opted in, but we also had, uh, we had a, a drop in, uh, some of our in-person attendance or students that were there that kind of offset each other as a percentage. But we did have, uh, have a, an additional round. I don't know the raw number. Dr. Sallaghi, was it, uh?
I think it was around 2,500 total staff and students opted in, in this, in this next round. So it was up, up a little bit from those that decided to opt in. And it doesn't necessarily mean all of those people will submit. They have the option to submit, but we did have a slight increase in the submission this round.
Other than that, I just appreciate all the work going into determining where the opening seats are and finding ways to get people in that want to be in school. And I do appreciate prioritizing seniors as well, because I know that, um, we've been hearing since the beginning of the school year from parents saying that they desperately want their seniors to have some sort of school experience before they leave District 200. So thank you for the efforts on that part.
Dave, just a couple of things. Um, you know, I, I too appreciate all the feedback and, and that we're getting from the community. Um, I've commented several times, there, there are some people that are just downright ignorant, and, um, we all know which ones they are. And, um, I'm trying to focus on positive ones, and I had a positive encounter with a teacher who wrote us a note advocating for a return to school February 1st. Um, I ran into him at Costco, and the first thing he did was thank me and us for our service. And I thanked him for writing a respectful email, because it was a difference of opinion of where we ended up. Couldn't have been a better conversation. We talked on the way to the car, and that's how these things should go, not, you know, how, how much we don't care, or we're not thinking about the kids, or, you know, we've been very consistent. And so I, I've kind of, you know, personally just tried to focus on those positive ones. Just a quick question on the elementary numbers, trimester one versus trimester two, are the percentage of in-person consistent like they were in middle and high school?
Trimester one, we had, uh, I believe we had about 73% of our students opted in. Um, I, I think that's what you're asking, how many did we have in, like at the beginning of the year?
So we went up from 73 to 77.
Yeah, at the, at that midpoint trimester, we ended up adding, I believe, I'm going to say roughly 120, 150 students, we, uh, at that trimester point. And so, um, we, we did have an increase that came at that, at that trimester one to trimester two.
Okay, thanks. Um, that's it. Everything else I had has been asked. All right, thank you. And I, I appreciate all the board and for the questions and comments and detail. Uh, just, I guess, two really, maybe three really quick comments. First off, in terms of our middle school and high school students that are learning remotely, I would just try to encourage our schools to reach out to them and go through a, a dedicated effort to reach out to them and try to draw them into the schools for the activities and clubs. Um, it's easy for the kids who are, you know, going hybrid, but, you know, reaching out to those remote students is going to be important. Secondly, I really appreciate the timeline, and when it went into this, each individual table had a timeline of what we were going to try to do and how we're going to try to move the ball forward, so to speak. That was an unintended pun about moving the ball forward, but, um, I, I like that kind of week-by-week basis. And then, and then finally, I think, um, somebody said it recently, I really appreciate all the adjustments we're trying to make and being considered to continue to evolve and, and move forward. You know, as I, you know, I read about other school districts, talk to people within the school district community, I feel like they're kind of tackling now what we tackle, tackled back in September and October. And so I feel like we're really trying to continue to improve the experience and find those opportunities. The fact that we're already talking about, you know, the class of 2021 and some of those events that typically happen at the end of the year. And so I just really appreciate all the hard work that's being done by- And so I just really appreciate all the hard work that's being done by, by not only the people in this room, but our people at the schools, the, the effort they're putting in going beyond, you know, beyond the traditional day to, to try to continue to evolve and make it better as, as good as we can for this year. So I feel like we're way ahead of where many of our peers are. I hear it all the time. I read it on social media that we're being looked to as the ones who, as, as the model. So even though we don't feel like our community appreciates that, I just wanted Dr. Schuler and your team to know that we do. So that's really all I had for this comment. So I appreciate, appreciate all the effort that we continue to put into this and we will move into our second item, which is also very important. So, Dr. Schuler?
Mr. Farley is going to make his way up to the podium at this meeting each year. We always present our five-year financial forecast model and this starts the, the budget process. So I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Farley to take you through a five-year financial forecast.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. As was mentioned, this is really the kickoff as we move forward with our budgeting process. And this gives the board the opportunity to take a look at where we're looking for next year as well as four years out. Obviously, in these uncertain times with, you know, pick the topic, finances no different. There's obviously a lot of what-ifs and a lot of unknowns that are in our future. So we work hard to try and do our best with our assumptions as we work through this model and process. But that said, I'm going to jump, jump into the presentation and a lot of that will get explained as we move along. I think it's always important to talk about the fiscal metrics of the district and some of these are going to be very familiar to the board. As you recall, back in December, the board heard the audit presentation. Part of that audit included that operating expense per pupil, which is a, one of the key indicators about the cost to educate a student in our school district is at 13,407 for this past, the year we just completed. That is always historically been below the state average and we're generally the second lowest school district when it comes to our operating expenditures per student. So that continues. That number did go down. Part of that is a function of what happened to the finances in the last quarter of last year as COVID came into play. District fund balance, again, that's in our annual financial report. We're at 35%. We're well within the range of 25 to 40%. Fund balance, that our policy indicates, that fund balance has grown over time as we at the same time have been ramping up the use and spending on capital projects throughout the district. Obviously, the board's well aware of that funding and we'll talk a little bit about that later. Our Standard and Poor's bond rating is that AA+ with a stable outlook. That's the second highest rating behind AAA. So that has improved over the course of time as well and that obviously impacts us as we go out to issue debt. Having a rating of that magnitude brings us lower interest rates if we are so inclined to issue debt and then obviously is a, a good financial marker for the community to know as well. Our State Board of Education designation for FY '20, as reported in the AFR for the fifth consecutive year, we are financial recognition. Our, actually, our score went up from 3.8 to 3.9 out of four. So we actually saw some improvement within the, the metric. The, the ranking didn't change, but we're getting closer to that 4.0, which is important. And finally, the Board of Education passed a balanced budget back in September. That is the 11th year of our balanced budget. Just a little background on the model that we're going to present tonight and how, you know, what we've used. We've used this model in some form going back to the early 2000s when the folks at PMA created it. They eventually created Forecast Five for more analytics and a separate company, but we've been using the Forecast Five model here for a number of time. It does, it's a great tool for us as a school district. It helps us to do this multi-year financial plan, gives us what-if scenarios that we can plan. We can look at our performance. We can upload it easily with our new accounting system, a little, could as well with our old one. And then budget distribution and stakeholder reporting. It also is very helpful when we're bargaining to be able to run scenarios and help us with that. One of the things that Forecast Five has done recently that we're going to share with the board first is kind of taking a look at the picture of where we're at currently in our finances before we jump into the five-year plan. This is part of what's called Five Cast Plus and we're presenting it to you tonight for the first time and it's something I think that'll get a lot of use as we move forward and we've enjoyed working with it. The first chart I'm going to share with you kind of shows a metric for some different targets that we want the board to be aware of. The first, you know, as we look at the revenue, and again, this is our major operating funds, you can see that our projected year-end fund balance as a percentage of revenue, which is the indicator we use, is that at the end of this year is targeted to be at about 33.5%, assuming everything goes somewhat as planned. Our actual year-to-date revenues, you can see it, were projected to be about 48.16% and we're at about 47.68%, which is pretty good, which is really kind of in line of where, where we anticipated to be. Again, there's obviously impacts of COVID on revenue and interest rates and things of that nature that have gone down. So we're pretty close to target on, on that as well. If you look, go down to the green indicator, you can see our local resources, our local sources, we should be at about 48.59%. We're at 47.63. Again, very close. You know, local sources, again, for review is everything from our tax collection to our, to fees parents pay, to our before and after-school program, interest earnings and other items. When you look at our state sources, we're actually a little bit higher than we, we anticipated to be when looking through the model. And again, I think that's just a function of timing of when the state has been releasing funds to the school district. Yesterday, we received our second categorical payment, which is way ahead of where we were last year. We had, did not receive our second categorical payment until April. We received the first one in October, which, so the state is about a month behind. They've historically been anywhere from, I think last year we got the first payment in December and the second one in April. So now we've received October and January, which is ahead of schedule, definitely by state standards. So that's good news. Like, you know, I'm not sure where they're getting the money, but I heard their, their revenue stream is not as impacted as it was originally set. So maybe that has some, something to do with it as well. But right now, our state funding is coming in pretty good. This chart just shows you our revenues by fund, what our budget is, that projected number by fund, and then where we actually are year-to-date. So you can see on the Ed Fund, we're tracking slightly below where we would be projected to be normally. Again, as we look at this, this, this projection is looking at prior years and, and last year specifically. And if you recall, the first six months of the last fiscal year, last year, we're obviously not COVID-impacted. It wasn't until we got into March that things started to go obviously a little bit differently for the school district and the rest of us. So you look at O and M, our, you know, we're kind of right on line with where we anticipated being debt services is obviously not impacted at all. Our, our revenues in transportation are a little higher than anticipated and our other funds are pretty much right on line where, with where we would project to be. And then if you look by source, again, comparing over last year, local, we're, our current year-to-date is pretty much in line with where we were year-to-date last year. State is pretty close as well and federal is a little bit higher as well. Same model with expenditures, the first chart, the red one, if you look at that, that is a, what our fund balance would be as a percentage of expenditures. That's not how we do the calculation, but that, that is there just for, for review. It's part of the program, so we thought we would share it. Our actual year-to-date expenditures, based on history, we'd be at about almost 42%. We're running at about 39% right now. So we're running a little bit behind where we would normally project to be on expenditures year-to-date. Our year-to-date salaries and benefits, we would be at about 38.85. We're running almost just under 38, so pretty close there. And then our other objects, we would be at about 52% projected, but we're running about 42%, so about 10% lower. When you look at our projected numbers by fund, you can see our education fund, we're trailing a little bit behind in expenditures, operations and maintenance is running right on. Debt services running a little bit higher actual year-to-date over last year. It's just a timing issue. Probably the most notable of all these funds is transportation, obviously with not running our middle school and high school routes for periods of time. During the first semester, we have not spent as much in our transportation compared to what we projected or probably where we'll end up coming budget-wise. Our IMRF Social Security Fund is running pretty much online. Our capital projects is running a little bit higher and that's just a function of the spending out of that, out of that fund. When you look at it compared to our current year-to-date compared to last year, salaries and benefits are running a little bit higher than our prior year-to-date, which was anticipated. Our purchase services, we are down. Again, that's a function of some of the transportation impact as well as food service to some degree. Supplies were running lower. Capital outlay, we're running much lower. Other objects were running a little bit higher. I think some of that is with the outsourced tuition and then the other, other two object codes are running, are obviously very minimal. That said, is there any questions kind of over the six-month comparison as we looked at the prior six months of the last fiscal year to this fiscal year? Any questions about any of the variances or anything you saw that you'd like to ask at this point?
Are the CARES funds included in the revenues by source?
Yes. On, on, on the revenue side or the expenditure side or both?
Well, the revenue side is what my question.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. We've, we've started receiving those funds. We haven't received all of it yet. I think we had about $1 million and I want to say we've received $400,000 maybe of that CARES funding so far.
Okay. Also, that's a pretty small number. I think I had that, the 4 million is, not the is.
That's the ESAR money that just came out. It's got everything, it has to have an acronym and it has to be different. So it's a, it's called ESAR, the, the new funding. So that is, that, that, we just found out about that and are still diving into that. I'll talk a little bit how that will impact us in the future.
On the next slide, the, the blue, the year-to-date other objects being lower, is the driver the same thing that's on the next to the transportation and food?
Mm-hmm. Correct.
Okay. And then the capital outlay, you know, was much larger last year. Is that just timing of, timing of payments?
Yeah, that could, some of that is timing of payments and, and some of the buildings not spending their funds in that regard.
Okay. Thank you.
Chris, did you have a question?
Yeah, so I understand the, for the expenditures by fund, we're running, I know you said, you know, lower than what we thought. Help me understand that, the why there.
In which fund?
The expenditure, oh, for education, I'm sorry.
Sure. It's really the impact, if you, if you go back, I think it's really running under the, you know, the, where was that at? The purchase services and the capital outlay of funding, I think, is where we're seeing in the education fund, not spending as much as anticipated in the overall.
So even with needing to purchase more devices, more live streaming, more all these extra, I mean, I understand maybe why our expenditures for salaries is up because we had more staff that we had to keep sizes lower, but I was just curious why, what with the, it just seemed like it was such a discrepancy.
Yeah, a lot of the capital budget is just not being spent at this time.
Yeah. That makes sense. Okay.
And some of the purchase service, too. Our food service is obviously much different than, than what it would be in a normal year as well because we're, we, we still offer it, but we're, I think our counts are obviously down because we're not running à la carte and other items. It's all the grab-and-go stuff. So we're not being charged as much in that, in that area as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we move on to the five-year? Just, these are some of the data elements that are used in the model as we move forward. We, we put, there's historical data in there. The current budget is always the, the driver of the model. So every year when we create a budget and, and put it into the model, that's the leaping off point for our assumptions as we move forward. Obviously, the impact of tax levies, extensions, rates, the EAV of the district enrollment, and then the assumptions, which are the key thing. We did share the assumption, assumptions we were using with Jim and Dave prior to the meeting, just so we could share that with them if they had any questions and we'll roll through those tonight. Just a reminder, and again, this, this model is our, our overall operating budget. It excludes the IMRF budget. We do this because when we do our aggregate report, the, we want to track the fund balance and the fund balance does not include the IMRF fund. So for the purpose of the rest of the presentation, the IMRF fund is set aside, but it includes all the other functions of operating budgets of the school district. Obviously, you can see, as we've talked about this in the budget and levy process, property taxes and other local make up the largest share of our, our district funding with the general state aid or what's now evidence-based funding and other state money at about 11% and then federal is at 4%. So it's an overall operating budget of just over 176 million. The assumptions we use for the CPI for our tax levy, obviously that is a key indicator as we discussed during the levy process. We just found out on, in early January, what the CPI that we will use for the levy come November of this year and that number is about 1.4, or is 1.4%. Historically, we've tracked it about 175 or 185 over the 10-year model and about a 175 over the last, excuse me, I have that backwards, about 1, 1.8 or 1.9 over the last five years. So it did come down a little bit. Obviously, that's an impact of what was going on in the economy. So the CPI did drop down a little bit. We do use 2%. So for the purpose of this five-year model, we've got 1.4 that we'll levy in the next levy process and then 2% moving forward. Just as another aside, we do have a, a unit group that meets to review all the assumptions that other school districts are doing, are like, are, are benchmark districts and we put together information and share and it's 2% as the CPI is pretty common used by other school districts that use this model. Other levy assumption is new growth. And again, this will look familiar from when we did the levy presentation. You can see we do not know what our new growth is when we levy. We, we are anticipating about 20 million for our 2020 levy that we did in November. We won't find out that number till March. Moving forward, we have it bumped up due to some growth in the south part of our district, some developments that are occurring. And then obviously in 2022, we have the impact of the TIF II in Wheaton expiring, which is a pretty significant TIF in the downtown area. And then we, we dial it back down to about 25 million moving forward for the last three years of the model. Other local revenue, corporate personal property replacement tax, we, we're keeping that flat as well as all other local revenue, except for interest earnings, which we've backed down. Obviously, interest rates have collapsed. So where we were earning upwards of over a million dollars in interest across all our funds at our investments, that number has come down significantly and the model has been adjusted accordingly. State funding, we're keeping the evidence-based funding at projected levels as well as categorical funding. We may see some reductions here. This is something we're going to have to keep an eye on. We're not sure how the state of Illinois will be, if the state of Illinois will be propped up by any federal funding or if some of the new money that Mr. Long mentioned, the ESAR funding, if there will be any kind of swap out of state money because we are receiving that ESAR funds. So we will continue to monitor that as well. The state does have, has to show a maintenance of effort if they're, in their funding. So if they cut education funding. if they cut education funding, they also have to cut across the board in all other areas. So we're not quite sure how that's all going to play out, but that's something we'll have to keep an eye on. But for the basis of tonight and looking forward and some of that uncertainty, we'll keep an eye on it, but we've kept everything flat, as it were. Our federal revenue, we've kept that at projected budget levels, except for that ESER money, which will impact, we anticipate impacting next year's budget, as well as blending in a little bit into the FY twenty-three budget. Those funds are really available during three budget years. If we were to start using it this year and into the next two years, that is available to school districts. We anticipate using those funds primarily in the next fiscal year, and then with some leak into the following fiscal year. So the model includes that as well. Looking at revenue sensitivity, just for the purpose of, as we talk through some of these numbers, for the CPI, every one percent is equivalent of one point four million to the school district. Every one million dollars in new growth is about forty-two thousand three hundred dollars. And our tax collection rate, which was important as we were concerned about the impact of the economy and people's ability to pay their taxes, and I know the clerk's office put together some options for folks, which was important, but every one-tenth of one percent equates to about a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Our categorical payments, which I had mentioned earlier, we get four of those a year. We've received the first two. Each payment is around one point seven million dollars. Any questions on revenues or any of the assumptions we use before I move into expenditures?
You have a question?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Dave. On the state and federal where you've assumed it flat, is that consistent with how you've done it in the past, or is that more conservative than normal?
It's pretty consistent. The evidence-based funding, when that came into play, or came into being as when general state aid was phased out and they went in with this new funding formula, we were receiving about three hundred thousand dollars additional funding a year. The, 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 the state had committed to a dollar value that was going to be spread across all school districts, and we were receiving for the first three years of evidence-based, three hundred thousand dollars. We were accounting for that in prior years when we were doing this. That extra three hundred thousand, we did not do it so this, it is not accounted for any increase in that, so keeping it flat is a little bit different, but I think that's probably a safe, hopefully a safe bet at this point.
Generally philosophically, it's consistent with the past.
Pardon me?
Consistent with the past philosophically. Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Paulson?
Yeah, just one quick question on the EAV growth in that 2022. What levy year does that fall into?
The, are you talking about the new growth?
Yeah, when the TIF expires and we get the new growth bump.
The levy in, in November of 2022, that the board, that's the year the TIF expires, the new levy in the year the TIF expires.
So the levy would fund twenty-three, twenty-four school year?
Yeah, we would receive the first payment in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year in June, and the impact of that, and then September of, which would be the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
So that, that levy, not, not this coming November's levy, but the following levy is really important?
Correct, yeah. That would be, yes, it would be important that we capture all of that new growth and construction. This is probably the largest impact, TIF impact, that we've had since the Cantera TIF expired back in 2010.
And so, you know, if you don't capture that, it's gone, never get it back. Right? Okay.
I had one quick question. With the ESER money, so are you expect, not expecting to receive it until twenty-two, twenty-three? Are we going to receive it, but we just can, we have three years to use it?
You have, the, the use of it, you could technically use it over three years. It's, we just found out how much we're getting, and there's a lot of discussion about how to use the money, and I know there's discussion about, you know, catch, catching up, and I'm sure Mrs. Murphy could probably speak in much greater educational detail of how it could be used. You can use it for ventilation and other, other programs and, and, you know, that whole recovery issue with student growth and student learning. So we have to identify all that. We have to put it together into, it is, probably is federal funding go much less restrictive than how title operates or, or other federal funds in the past. So there is a lot more ability of school districts to, you know, take ownership or how, how they're, how they're going to spend those funds. So I don't know, Mrs. Murphy, if you wanted to talk about that as well?
I was just going to add into that we also have to share those funds with private schools as well, so that's another consideration. And so do we, like, apply for it as we need the money, or do we get like a lump sum, and then we can, I guess that's more my question, like, when do we actually receive the money, or do we apply for it as we?
We, we have an allocation. You have to spend the money, and then it, then you, you kind of apply for the monies to come. So you have to have a, a plan approved, right? And then the monies flow. So they don't just, like, come as a check that goes in your bank account? Like, you have to, you have to identify specifically the spend that will be applied to it.
You have to file expenditure reports that you file with the state, or with the federal government, and then the money comes, flows in.
And then is that still projected to be just a tiny bit over four million?
Yeah, it's around three point eight, almost four million, yes.
Okay.
And I, I think Mrs. Murphy mentioned it, there is, I think the governor actually has a set aside for private schools, so I don't know that the impact is similar to how the CARES work with the private sec, private schools, but I, I think that's part of the governor's set aside. There's money set aside at the, at the state level for them to, to use those funds as well, or for, at his discretion.
Okay.
The difference in the amount is that there's actually a allocation that stays at the state level. So the original allocation, I think there's been a little, there's a little bit of a hole back from it, so we were originally thinking just over four. I think it's a launder.
Okay, yeah, because I looked on that spreadsheet that you sent, and I saw it, it was like three point eight something now. So is it more that number, closer to that number? Okay.
So we do have the revenue and the expenditures accounted for in, in the model, both in, in two fiscal years.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
The actuals in the, is that the end of December?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Moving on to expenditures, you can see again, where people, business, salary and benefits make up the largest portion, one hundred and seventy-two and a half million dollars in expenditures. As, as we go through the model, too, this is going to be the first year we're presenting this model, where we're talking about we're moving out operational dollars towards the capital projects fund. So as we talk about this in the model, it's going to look a little bit different than the past and where, where our focus is, but I'll talk about that as we get there. Again, this is all funds except for the IMRF fund. As far as salaries go and staffing, we have the teachers at two and a half percent increase for FY twenty-two, which is the last year of the contract, and then we just kept that flat moving forward through the end of the model. All other staff, we have classified at three percent, and a function of that is we are, we do enter bargaining, but we also have to work through the increases related to the minimum wage, which will go up a dollar a year here for the next four years to where we're up to fifteen dollars. So obviously, as we look at our pay rates, we have rates that we are going to have to adjust and be able to accommodate and keep up with that. So we do have classified moving up at a, at a higher percentage, admin at one and a half percent. And then we're keeping the model staffing level similar to FY twenty moving for, where we were at FY twenty moving forward. Obviously, this year is a little bit different in the budget, so we've made some adjustments down. There are some one-year contracts that were put into place to accommodate for the staffing levels needed. As we, I think it was mentioned earlier, we're almost kind of running two separate districts here, as we have the VA and, and the in-person and, and remote. Health and dental benefits, we have three percent annual increases put in for the, the term of the model, just a kind of a preview of a coming attraction. We, we know our, we got our initial look at what we're looking at for health benefits next year, and we're right around two point nine. Usually, that final number does go down, hopefully it will, but we did, had our meeting with NIHP, our pool, and we're seeing really good numbers for our healthcare this year. They are obviously aware of impact of COVID and how we're going to fund that. So overall, we are seeing good numbers that match up with what we've got in the model. We also are, have seen migration to the HMO. That, that is a good thing. The PPO has gone down. Participation, obviously, it's a costlier program, so we are happy to see that continue to happen. For purchase services, supplies, capital outlay, tuition, we've kept it for the most part flat. Food service, custodial outsourcing and transportation, we've got three percent. Again, we've got some impact of the minimum wage that will impact our food service provider, our custodial outsourcing as well. That is out to, currently is getting ready to go out to bid this year. So we'll be bringing that to the board at a future date, but we anticipate, obviously, some impact higher than the CPI, as we try to accommodate and adjust for the impact of the minimum wage going up. Also, again, talking to the uncertainty of what's going on, we have carried one million dollars of contingency funding in the education fund going forward, just not knowing what's going to happen. So the model does have a one million dollar line item in there for the term of those years in the education fund, similar to what we are carrying this year, as far as a contingent, having a contingency. Obviously, our amount was a little bit higher this year than that, but we are carrying a contingency line item in the budget, just to make sure we have some funds set aside. It may be a good practice moving forward, anyway. Capital projects, as I mentioned previously, this is going to make the model look a little different as we have moved into a, a funding stream or funding model that our auditors have, both our prior auditor, our new auditor suggested we do, where we are moving the funding for the capital projects out of our operating budget and put it into the capital project fund, which is not seen as a, a normal operating fund, but where the state has designated major projects should be charged. For this year, we have a transfer for FY twenty-two for next year. If you recall the model, we showed at the levy time, we have six point two of operating funds going over to that capital projects fund and one million of fund balance you use to get us to that seven point two million dollars. That will be the last year where we've, in our plan, where in future years, it will be that seven point two million, and we should not have to draw down any fund balance. And again, that was kind of our four-year plan to get to that seven point two, where that was basically built into our budget. Again, the only difference here is we're basically moving money out of the operations and maintenance fund, so that fund will, when we get to our, our final chart, I'll talk a little bit about how that looks on there now that we've got that transfer set up. Additional assumptions, we've got no legislative changes in school funding, no changes to the tax cap. We do not have a pension, TRS pension cost shift. That obviously is always a topic of discussion that's out there, but we are, have not heard anything lately on that, but obviously, it does rear its head from time to time. We also have included known and projected retirements with teachers hired in at a salary of about fifty thousand. I will, I think it's important to note that we have a significant number of retirements this year compared to normal years. We are over forty teachers, over four million dollars of salary that is leaving the district from a finance standpoint. Obviously, when you hire those back, if you're hiring them in, if we're talking about a hundred thousand down to fifty, we've got some savings there. We do have some impact, though, on our post-employment penal, not penalties, post-employment payments that are part of the contract as well that we've accounted for, but we do have a high number of teachers. I think the biggest year in my time in the district was around sixty-plus teachers, which was significant, but we're well over forty, and there still could be some more to come as we get through the end of the fiscal year. But we're, we're seeing a larger number. We anticipate having a, a pretty good class going out again next year, so that's accounted for. And then finally, as I mentioned in the beginning of the presentation, the current year's budget is always kind of the leaping off point for the, for the model and how all these assumptions impact. Obviously, that, that budget line changes, and this is a unique budget year. But I will jump to our chart that I think most of you are used to seeing. If you jump to the surplus deficit line, you can see this is the revenues and expenditures as projected for the next five years after, obviously, our FY twenty-one budget. We historically have focused in on that surplus deficit. You'll see that we show, obviously, significant surpluses in all of those years, and again, that is the impact of moving those operational dollars over to the capital projects fund. So basically, that's the funding that's coming out of the O and M fund, the operational dollars that we are transferring over to cover the costs. So you, as you look at it for the next, next fiscal year, I think you, we really probably need to move down the line to that surplus deficit line, where you can see that this year, that three point four million is really the impact of fund balance that we're transferring. So for that surplus deficit line now really becomes the line we need to take a look at to see where we are from an operational spending standpoint. So next year, we're projecting to be about two hundred thousand dollars positive. The following year, we're about a hundred and forty thousand dollars negative, which I think is manageable, obviously, on a budget of over a hundred and eighty million. And then moving forward, we're showing some positive surpluses as, as we go. Obviously, we have to bargain two different contracts, so that could impact as well. I think the other important line we always look at is that fund balance, what is, what's happening with our fund balance? If you go down to the bottom, you can see our fund balance as a percentage of revenues moving forward. We stay pretty static right around thirty percent, which is still well within our twenty-five to forty percent range. Obviously, a lot's going to happen over the next five years, and, and we'll have, we'll make adjustments over time. Budgets may look different than what we're projecting here, but overall, I think we're in a pretty stable position, especially with the strong commitment of the board to fund capital projects at a, out of the operating budget of, in seven point two million dollars. That red, red line going across is basically the transfer you see to the capital projects fund. So where we used to look at that surplus deficit line above, we really need to look down below here at the, at the, at the surplus deficit at the bottom to see kind of where we, where we are at. With that, I will take any questions you may have. I know that's a lot of information, and this chart looks different.
Yeah. First off, can we get a chart? I can't, I can't read this thing. I can't see what the numbers are, but.
Oh, okay, sorry.
It's too small for me.
Go online. That's what I did, I pulled it up online to.
So it's, we're, our plan over the next five years is to continue to follow the Sherman Durgis, right? So seven point two million in building improvement, so roughly thirty-six million dollars investment in our buildings without any debt, right? Without any debt. That's all operating costs.
Correct, that's all operating funds, correct.
And at some point in the, in the next couple of years, if I remember our, our debt restructuring, we created some drop-offs, which would enable us to take advantage of those drop-offs potentially, depending on what that board decides to do to deal with some additional investment in our buildings.
Correct. Any other questions around the table?
A couple. The million-dollar contingency, is that new in terms of kind of philosophy, or have you also done that in the past?
It is. It's, the contingency line item has always been available to the school districts. You know, it's always been a line item in the state budget. We have never used it. Obviously, this year created a need, and with a lot of unknowns, and we just think moving forward, especially in the next couple of years, I think it's wise to have it in there, but I think it's something that we should, you know, have a set aside just for unknowns.
Yeah. Okay, I think that's good. The TRS pension shift, what would the potential impact be to our financials for that? I know it's a hard question, but maybe if you could just put a fence around it in terms of a range of potential impact? of a range of potential impact?
Yeah, it's, it's hard to calculate it because you don't know how exactly the shift would work and what, you know, I think they discuss.
Are we talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars, or millions, or tens of millions?
Yeah, you know, there was a discussion of a ramp up, starting with a half percent of your overall certified, you know, TRS salaries, so, you know, we're almost, you know, well over $90 million in that range, so when you're talking about a half percent, it's a pretty, you know, a half percent doesn't sound like a lot, it's, it still can be a significant number. Dr. Shul, I don't know if you've heard anything or any other different ways they've talked about doing it?
I haven't heard any, well, I think the, one other way I've heard it is this, the thought of kind of freezing the on behalf where it currently sits, so that a board would assume responsibility for, like, raises moving forward, right? So not, not necessarily going back to previous years and shifting that responsibility, but putting a little more control at the local level to say as we, you know, as we continue to work with our teachers, our collective bargaining agreements and increase compensation, we would assume a bigger percentage moving forward. That would have a lesser immediate impact, but would stay, obviously, for the longer term. That makes sense.
Yeah, because really what I'm kind of getting at, or if, you know, there is, you see in the media, you know, the governor threatening to pull funds and, and, you know, I mean, I think your approach of flat funding makes sense in terms of the revenue, but just looking at if, and we've got surpluses, so if we were going to have issues because of the pension issue, or we lose some funding from the state or federal, we have the million-dollar contingency, we have the surplus, and then the fund balance, every percent is, you know, obviously, as the revenue goes up, it's a little higher, but every percent is 1.8 to 2 million. So in terms of fund balance, we have, you know, between 9 and 10 million dollars. So we have that. In terms of wiggle room, should we have some revenue shortfalls from what's built in there?
Correct. And after next year, we don't, we don't have that commitment of fund balance towards capital projects, so that's, that's helpful as well.
Okay. Thanks.
Does the contingency, the 1 million in contingency, if we were to use it, that will come out of fund balance? Is that correct?
No, it's, it's accounted for within the operating budget.
Oh, okay. Okay. And just the, the fact that we have 40 teachers retiring, do we have any concerns about replacing all them? I just have a lot.
In terms of the ability to find teachers, yeah, there's, I think there's always a concern. Certainly, there's been a conversation around what the supply chain is going to look like. I would tell you this year, depending on where those sit, we do have a number of teachers on one-year contracts this year because we hired so many teachers at the, the last minute to, especially to staff our elementary programs and some of our virtual academy programs. So I think we have a little leg up this year in some areas that we've got some folks that have worked with us that we might have the capacity to actually keep some of our one-year folks rather than releasing them.
Okay. Okay. And then just, I'm going to take one more opportunity here to read something into the public record that I just did, as Mrs. Murphy stated, that with the CARES Act money and the ESER money that we're receiving, that part of that does go to private schools, and it is, it's a small amount, but I just think that's important to bring up because I, we receive a lot of emails telling us, do what the private schools are doing, do what the private schools are doing. And so I just did a quick, through online sources, analysis of comparing what we received in CARES Act money compared to what private schools received in PPP loans. And I just think this is important for people to understand that we certainly very much appreciate the money that we're receiving from the federal government. You know, in our first round in the CARES Act, we received just a little over $1 million, and we have roughly 12,000 students in our district, and that came out to $84 per student that we received. And I just want to come, make sure that our community is aware, and this isn't anything, with, I want to make very clear, this isn't anything against the private schools. I mean, they had this opportunity to apply for this money, and they, they should have done it, and that's not where I'm going with this at all, but I just want people to understand the amount of money per student that we receive versus what private schools receive. And what's available in public records as far as what private schools received in PPP loans, PPP loans, is a range, and it's, it's a varying range. So for instance, someone like St. Mike's, they received somewhere between 350,000 and $1 million. We don't know the exact amount that they received, but it was in that range. Timothy Christian and Elmhurst received 1 to 2 million. Bennett Academy received somewhere in between 2 and 5 million. Wheaton Academy, 1 to 2 million. Clapham School, 150 to 350,000. St. Francis, 1 to 2 million. Now, I looked up their enrollment just on, I think it was greatschools.com, because I'm not sure what their enrollment is, but their enrollments are much lower than ours. And so, and I did, I looked at what if they got the lowest amount, what if they got the highest amount, something in the middle. So again, just looking at that first allocation that we got, because that's when PPP loans were, that's what we can compare it to. So we had 84 dollars per student, and the, the lowest, if, if they all received the lowest amount in that range, the closest to us would be St. Mike's. If they received $350,000 based on their enrollment, that's $617 a student that they received. And Timothy Christian and Elmhurst, that would be $2,800 a student at their lowest range. At the highest range, you're looking at a school receiving almost $5,000 per student if they got the highest amount possible, based on their enrollment, based on public data that I could find. And then with this $4 million or so that we're receiving from, or 3.8 from ESER, if you add that to the million that we received, then we go up to $422 a student. And again, that's based on two rounds of federal money, and this is just the one round of PPP that they can apply for. So, because I know we received some emails, like, you've received all this money, and, you know, you need to spend it, and, and we did, and we're really grateful for that. And, but I think when you compare that to what private schools received based on their enrollments, I just think that's important to understand from a resource perspective. And again, I just want to be very clear, I think that's great that the private schools do that. I'm not knocking that in any way, shape, or form. It's just meant to be a comparison as far as dollars per student, as far as how that worked out, you know, in, in, from a financial perspective with public schools and private schools. So, Bill, thank you again for the thoughtful analysis, and I really appreciate that, and I'm sad that this is your last time.
Yes. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, December, end of December's end of month, six in our fiscal year, right?
Six months, correct.
Right. So I have a hard, I'm, what's the right word? Help me understand the assumption on staffing levels remaining similar to 20. And then if I look at the financial report, I think it says our expenditures are running 10% under for, on the education fund? Is that, I think that's right. So, so is that, I'm not sure how we're, what assumption we're going to make on the forecast going forward, if we're going to assume that our, what our, kind of our run rate is, or if we're going to assume it what our budget is.
Let me answer the first part of that, and then Bill can help on the, the budget side. So the assumption, why go back to fiscal 20? Because we knew that we added staff specifically this year tied to the models that we set up for schools, so we, Bill and I actually had that conversation in the assumptions, and actually said, I think we ought to pull it, if, if we kept the staffing level flat to this year, I think we'd be significantly overstaffed going into next year, based on the assumption that we are back next year to something that resembles a little closer to a, a normal staffing and school model experience.
Sorry, I read it as 21, it's 20.
Yep.
Sorry. Yeah, that's why, and that's why we're 10% under, that makes, yeah, that triangulates. Thanks. Sorry about that. Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
No. So I think it's a great report. It's always good to look ahead five years and kind of get a good feel for, you know, where we're, where we're sitting, what the, you know, the risk areas are. Of course, you know, I've been, I've been on the board seven years, and that state's always out there, and all those PTAL and, you know, pension cost shift, those are always the risk areas that we have to be aware of. So I feel good about the projections and what we're able to do in terms of our commitment to the community, in terms of making building improvements for, for our facilities, so good job. Appreciate your time. All right. I think that should cover it for this agenda item, and that should cover the meeting, so there'd be no further action to come before the board in open session. Could I have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting? So moved.
Moved by Mr. Long.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Crabtree. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, the meeting is adjourned.